Put out notice of this meeting a couple of weeks ago. We put the draft ordinance online. I've asked the Public Works Director to give us a presentation on what this means for Wausau and what it means for water utility customers and property owners. After that presentation, we will take public comment. I'll call you up in the order that you've submitted these forms. You can each have, you know, right now, there's only four commenters, so we don't have to commit stringently to the three minutes, but I would certainly hope that you would at least try to sum up your remarks in three minutes, per the council rules. Item number three on our agenda tonight says discussion and possible action on lead service line replacement program. That item was on in the event that the committee wanted to have some discussion after it had received public comment. There will be no action taken by the council tonight. We are only here to gather information, so even though item three does say possible action, you can rest assured that possible action tonight means no action. So, we are going to collect the information, digest that information, give Alders some time to discuss this with their individual neighborhoods, with their neighborhood groups if they so choose, and the lead service line draft ordinance, after we've received all this information, will appear on a future council meeting in the fall. At that point, the council will be asked to make a decision, but they will be armed with better information that they've been able to receive from water utility customers and taxpayers and their constituents. So, this is really only an information gathering session, so please don't be concerned that this thing will pass and become the rule tonight, because that's not our goal. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Public Works Director Lindman to bring us the start of his presentation. And, go ahead, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So, we had a presentation prepared by the engineering firm that was hired by the U.S. EPA under their lead service line accelerator program, and we've been working with them on a number of things with lead service lines. But, they're going to give a presentation tonight, very similar to what they gave to the commission related to lead service line replacement ordinance, and also as it relates to current regulations as well as future regulations that we can see. And, I think it's going to give you a little bit better background, and then you'll be able to ask questions of not only them, but staff as well as we move forward. So, Gemma?
Great. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gemma Kite, and I'm an engineer with the Horsley-Witten Group, an environmental consulting firm. I'm also joined by my colleague, Sarah Simon, who's joining virtually, as well as Mark Briggs. We are contractors to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency on the EPA Lead Service Line Replacement Accelerators Program. We're also joined tonight by Holly Young from the EPA as well. The Accelerators Program provides technical assistance to 10 water systems in Wisconsin, including Wausau, to advance progress toward a goal of lead-free water systems and identify best practices that can be applied elsewhere around the state and country. The idea with our technical assistance is to augment, but certainly not replace any work that is already going on underway in Wausau. It's also important to note that the Accelerators Program does not impose any costs on participating water systems, and it is not a regulatory enforcement program, but rather a technical assistance program. We are EPA contractors, so as such, we are not here to advocate for any local policies or impose any additional regulatory requirements. Our technical assistance does not supersede Wausau's ordinance process or necessary legal review. So, with that disclaimer, today's brief presentation is focused on providing background information on mandatory lead service line replacement ordinances in general terms. Specific details on Wausau's draft ordinance will be covered by city staff. Thank you. So, what are lead service lines? This diagram helps illustrate the different pipes and materials involved in bringing water into the property. Service lines are the sections of pipe used to connect homes or other properties to the water mains that are located in the streets. Lead is a pliable piping material used in older service lines until it was banned for use in water service lines by the EPA in 1986. Lead can leach from these service lines into the tap water. Leaching from lead from water service lines is likely the source of a significant amount of lead found in the blood of citizens in some Wisconsin cities and towns. In most communities, service lines are partially owned by the water system and partially owned by the customer. Here in Wausau, the service line between the customer's meter to the curb stop is owned by the customer, and the portion of the service line between the curb stop and the water main is owned by Wausau. Next slide, please. Note that galvanized water service lines that are or once were downstream of a lead pipe or lead connector are also considered requiring replacement. Lead that leached from the lead pipe or connector may have attached to the inside of a galvanized pipe and may be slowly released into the water. For this reason, and to reduce the risk, this is why the galvanize is also considered requiring replacement. An estimated 6 to 10 million lead service lines serve water to properties and communities across the United States. Here in Wausau, there are an estimated 8,000 customer-side lead service lines and 2,500 public lead service lines. In Wausau, there was no formal policy or ban on the use of lead. However, there is evidence through records that indicate lead was no longer used in the mid-1970s. So, why do we need to remove lead service lines? There are two main reasons. Health. Identifying and replacing lead service lines is an important way to reduce exposure to lead in drinking water. We understand that lead is a concern here in Wausau, given how many estimated lead service lines there are in the city. The second is regulatory requirements that exist at both the state and federal level. Next slide. So, for health, there is no safe level of lead exposure. When people come into contact with lead, it may enter their bodies and accumulate over time, resulting in damage to the brain, nervous system, red blood cells, and kidneys. Young children, infants, and fetuses are particularly vulnerable to harmful effects of lead. A child's mental and physical development can be irreversibly stunted by overexposure to lead. Mothers who have had exposure to lead in the past may store lead in their bones and be released from their bones during pregnancy and lactation. Regulatory requirements exist at both the state and federal level. EPA is harmonizing regulatory requirements with unprecedented funding through the bipartisan infrastructure law to make rapid progress on removing harmful lead in America's drinking water. Establishing an inventory of service line materials and identifying the location of lead service lines are key steps in getting them replaced. The federal 2021 Lead and Copper Rule revisions require systems to prepare and maintain an inventory of service line materials by October 16th of this year. The Lead and Copper Rule improvements, which is a draft rule, includes requirements for replacing a percentage of lead service lines in the system every year. This rule is still in draft form, but some requirement to replace lead service lines seems reasonable to anticipate in the final rule. Partial lead service line replacements can cause short-term elevated levels of lead and further extend lead health risk from service lines because a portion of the lead service line is still in use. Full replacements, that's both the public and the customer side, are not only a best practice, but they're also required for DNR funding, which I'll talk about in just a moment. The state of Wisconsin follows federal drinking water regulations and has some of its own state requirements related to reporting lead service lines and replacements, including through the Public Service Commission. The Wisconsin Administrative Code requires lead service line removals if certain lead sampling conditions are met or exceeded. So, what is a mandatory lead service line replacement ordinance? Well, an ordinance is defined by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities as "a local law of a municipality enacted by the proper authorities prescribing general, uniform, and permanent rules of conduct relating to the corporate powers of the municipality." As members of the common council, you are probably very familiar with ordinances in other contexts, such as ordinances that govern your own council's own procedures, ordinances for parking in the city, and for solid waste removal, for example. A mandatory lead service line replacement ordinance requires each owner of a property that is serviced by a customer-side water service line containing lead to replace that customer-side water service line under certain conditions. Ordinances can describe water system responsibilities and processes for customer-side replacements in different situations, such as when the public side is replaced, when only the customer side has lead, and replacing both a public and customer side in conjunction. Next, we'll go through a few questions about mandatory lead service line ordinances. And again, as a reminder, as an EPA contractor, we are not advocating for local policy, and this presentation is for informational purposes. So, why are Wisconsin communities passing mandatory lead service line replacement ordinances? Ordinances can address the issue of utility access to private properties for the inspection of service lines for lead after providing notice to the property owner. Addressing these issues is likely to help increase lead service line replacements. As I mentioned before, replacement of only a portion of the lead service line, so for example, if only the public side is replaced, this is referred to as partial lead service line replacement. And the weight of evidence indicates that partial lead service line replacement often causes tap water lead levels to significantly increase for a period of days to weeks to even several months. Mandatory ordinances can reduce partial replacements by requiring replacement of the full service line. And again, full service lines replacements, both the public and the customer side, is a requirement for DNR funding, which we'll talk about, and it is also likely a requirement in a potential final federal rule. One of the biggest drivers for why communities are adopting lead service line mandatory replacement ordinances is related to funding. Next slide, please. So, recognizing the need to provide municipalities financial tools to accelerate the replacement of lead service lines, the state passed Wisconsin Act 137 in 2017. Wisconsin municipalities that receive funding through consumer water rates approved by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission and that have customer-side water service lines that contain lead are eligible to apply for approval from the PSC to use ratepayer funds to provide financial assistance to help customers replace those customer-led service lines. If the city were to apply for approval from the PSC to use ratepayer funds, the city must pass an ordinance that outlines their general approach to implementing Wisconsin Act 137. Participation in Wisconsin Act 137 requires all lead service lines to be replaced, both on the public and on the customer side. Additionally, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, which is DNR for short, in collaboration with the Department of Administration and the Public Service Commission, established the private lead service line replacement program using the bipartisan infrastructure law funds to assist municipalities in their efforts to replace customer-led service lines. Some of the funding for lead service line replacements on private property will be awarded as principal forgiveness, which means no debt is incurred on behalf of the municipality for these funds. A municipality's eligibility for principal forgiveness is based on a priority scoring system, as well as additional criteria such as project type. In the past, municipalities will receive 10 points for having enacted an ordinance, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, or on the next few slides, sorry. So, first, what requirements need to be included in an ordinance? There are various detailed, both state and federal requirements that water systems can consider to include in their ordinances. Some examples include notification to customers prior to replacing the public-side lead service line, timing of customer-side lead service line replacements once the public side is done, provision of mitigation measures, such as filters, following lead service line replacements. Some of these requirements have flexibility, some are mandated, and we like to recommend that a best practice is to reflect the requirements in the ordinance where possible in general terms, and referencing potential changes to the requirements with language such as "as amended" or "as revised" when referencing federal and state laws. Have other Wisconsin communities adopted mandatory lead service line replacement ordinances? Yes. The answer is that many different communities across Wisconsin are adopting lead service line replacement ordinances. Some examples are the city of Oshkosh, Kenosha, Sheboygan, Madison, Milwaukee, to name a few. There are a variety of different ordinances that are out there, all tailored to the specific needs of the municipality. Municipalities can tailor their ordinances to the local needs and to their goals of lead service line replacement. Next slide. All right. So, is there timeline considerations for passing a mandatory lead service line replacement? So, this is where we're going to talk a little bit about the DNR funding. If the city is interested in applying for the DNR bipartisan infrastructure law funding, then they may want to consider passing an ordinance before the application deadline. So, the next application cycle is for fiscal year 2026, and that application deadline is next June of 2025. The city was awarded fiscal year 2024 funding. They got a really nice package, and they just recently applied for the fiscal year 2025 funding, just recently in June of this year. We have not seen yet the intended use plan that stipulates how projects are scored, but we can talk about this as the example from the most recent year. So, for example, if a municipality applied for the fiscal year 2025 DNR funding and wanted to receive an additional 10 points on their application, an ordinance had to be enacted prior to the June 30th, 2024, funding application deadline. These 10 points, along with other points that are used in the project scoring, determine the project ranking and the order in which DNR allocates principal forgiveness. We anticipate a similar situation for fiscal year 2026 funding applications. And you may be asking, what's the value of 10 additional points? For the fiscal year 2024 funding cycle, LSL projects scored between 189 and 299 points, with some differences between projects as small as one point. So, 10 additional points can really make a difference. And we've been hearing that each year, more and more municipalities are applying. City of Wausau did a great job getting in there early for the fiscal year 2024 funding application cycle, but now that it's well-known, more municipalities are taking advantage of it and applying for the funding, making it a lot more competitive. How is funding addressed in mandatory lead service line replacement ordinances? Funding replacements is a challenge for many municipalities. There are lots of loan and grant options that may help address this issue, but really, it is up to the municipality to decide what funding option works best for them. In ordinances, funding is usually referenced while not being too specific, because funding sources, amounts, terms, processes can change year to year. So, what we have seen in some examples is a community will stipulate that they may offer a financial assistance program, but they leave all of the funding details to be explained in a separate policy document where there's more flexibility to adjust that. We understand that the city of Wausau is doing everything that they can to secure funding to cover the costs of replacements. The two programs that I've mentioned, particularly as they relate to the ordinance, is the DNR. Again, that's the Department of Natural Resources, BIL LSL funding, where I said that the replacement ordinance helps with application scoring. And then, the other option for funding is, if the city so chooses, to go through PSC approval to use ratepayer funds, where a mandatory lead service line replacement ordinance is required. So, with that, I'm going to stop, and I'll turn it back over to Eric.
Thanks, Gemma. I think if the council has any questions related to our ordinance that's draft, that was placed online, that was out to the public, or any questions for Gemma on the presentation?
Okay. Questions? Alder Killian, go ahead.
Prior to the meeting, I have had constituents ask me if it's, if we don't have an ordinance, are we still able to get state funding for the lead service lines? And you answered yes. Could you explain that whole process?
Yeah. So, we apply for funds through the Safe Drinking Water Loan through the DNR, right? And that bill funding that came down that was specific for lead line replacement is flowing through the DNR, and that's where we get those funds. So, you're right. We do not need or required to have a lead service line replacement ordinance in place in order to apply for those funds. As Gemma said, it does give us an additional 10 points on the application, but it is not required. Just like in '24, we received funds. We do not have a replacement ordinance. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Go ahead, Carol.
So, in 2024, we didn't, by my understanding from what you, the...
Gemma.
Gemma, okay. What I was just saying is, it also wasn't as competitive then, correct?
Correct.
So, the positive, it's different just in the last couple of years for funding. So, if we want to get funding, that may give us more of a chance going forward, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it is going to raise our score. I think the other thing that should be considered, too, is the fact that the DNR through this funding requires that full replacements be done, right? And so, if we had a location that we wanted to do lead service line replacements, and we did not have an ordinance in place, and the homeowner decided that they didn't want us to replace their line, well, they wouldn't be required to, right? And we could not make them, which means that we could not replace our side with those funds either, because that would be a partial replacement, and we would not be allowed to do that. The other issue is, is that, you know, if we did have, let's say, a leak on our side, that we went in and replaced that line, right, and did that partial replacement, potentially, we could be out of compliance if we weren't, you know, if we didn't have the ability to require that full lead line replacement. Because if we just replaced ours, and the homeowner refused to replace theirs, and we were not allowed to do that, the utility could be out of compliance with state and federal rules.
Thank you. Just one other question, and I'm not, by asking these questions, I'm only clarifying, so I'm not advocating one way or the other for the ordinance. I just want to make that clear for anyone that's watching. But, I guess one of my concerns would be in the case of landlords, if they don't want to have it done, but then, do the tenants really have any kind of recourse if, you know, they're living there other than to move in, especially with our shortage of hosing? I guess that's just one of my concerns for if we didn't require it, or if people decided they didn't want to do it, and especially if they have children. So, has there been any discussion or any, would they have any recourse, or has that come up at all?
Yeah. I mean, it is difficult with, like, non-owner-occupied homes, right? Typically, we can get a hold of the tenants. We can't always get a hold of the owner. Sometimes we can get a hold of the management companies who actually have authority, right, to make these decisions, right, which helps, too. But, yeah, if we didn't have an ordinance in place, and a landlord or the owner of the property had a tenant, but the owner didn't want to do it, then we wouldn't be able to mandate that replacement.
Okay. One thing that came to mind also was that, you know, you had mentioned that we would not be able to do partial replacements where, I mean, for a while, we would do the public side all the time, and then give the property owner the option. So, we have a number of streets that we've redone where some along the way were done on both sides, but largely without help. The private side homeowners were usually, even if they wanted it, were unable to afford it. Some got partial grant funding that didn't necessarily cover the whole thing under our old program.
Correct.
And they were still left with some responsibility that they couldn't shoulder. So, even if they wanted the help, they couldn't take advantage of the opportunity that we were offering when the streets were done. I guess a concern I have is if we can't get that DNR funding, because we're, you know, not able to do partial replacements, is that going to impact our ability to properly complete infrastructure work? Because when we do a street, and when we do a full rebuild on a street, you redo the sewer and water.
Right.
And so, are we going to then be stopped from being able to do the sewer and water segments? I mean, we have miles and miles of infrastructure that people want fixed that we're way behind on, and, you know, without this ordinance and without complete replacements, if we can't get the utility work done beneath those streets, is that going to slow down our progress on streets? And then, secondarily, does that then also have some impact on transportation aid for us? If we can't get projects done, and we can't expend aid, like, where does that leave us on the infrastructure side?
Yeah. For right now, it's specifically with using the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, right? If we're using our own funding, if I say this wrong, Gemma, you can help me out, but if we're using our own funding, let's say to do a road project, right, the Lead and Copper Rule revisions right now allow for that, those partial replacements to take place currently, if the project is not for lead service line replacement, if it's for, like, road reconstruction or water main replacement. There are stipulations that we have to provide the water pitchers for them for at least six months with filters, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because we are disturbing those lines. But, the Lead and Copper Rule improvements that are in draft form right now will not, you know, they will require further action to mitigate that other side of the lead service line.
Well, and that really, I think, what should tee up in people's minds, then, is when we use the term, when we're spending our money versus the Safe Drinking Water Loan Fund money. Our money, in that context of infrastructure and street projects, means municipal debt and borrowing. You know, we don't just have cash on hand that we go out and build streets with. We bond and borrow for those streets every year as part of our annual debt obligations that we take on, as does the utility. And so, for those of us that are concerned about debt, if we are forced to not be able to access DNR funds for those utility projects beneath our streets, and we're then forced on the side, if we need to do these partial replacements, and we're forced to use our own money, our own money is going to need, it's going to mean increased borrowing, right? I mean, there's no alternative.
Right. The advantage of the Safe Drinking Water Loans is that they do have a principal forgiveness program, right? So, when we apply for those, you know, just like I give the example of Eau Claire Boulevard we did this year. We did apply for the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for that project to replace the water main, but we also got principal forgiveness with that, you know, which obviously reduces our loan, and also, it's a subsidized interest rate. So, it's a lot less right now than what we could have got out on the open market. So...
Well, under 1%, right? Was that what we found out? Was it...
I think, I think for the main project, I think it was like 2.6.
Oh, 2. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The lead service line replacement funding is at 0.25%. I think in the draft ordinance, it says 0.5, but that's incorrect. It's 0.2, it's a quarter percent.
And then, the other thing that came to mind, as Gemma was giving her presentation, when we talked about how municipalities are crafting their lead service line ordinance, and they're tailoring that language to meet local needs.
Yeah.
That really is what we were trying to do when we considered this item, and we were trying to really work on what amounted to be a floor amendment, trying to protect the property owner and the taxpayer from shouldering their portion of the private line and securing the fact that that line would be fully funded for them before we would move forward on any sort of enforcement action, you know? And that's included in the draft that we published. You know, I read an article late last week that says, well, you know, because that says grant monies, well, that certainly doesn't make sense, and it's not useful. Well, fine. Maybe you amend grant monies to funding. I don't know. But I think the wording of that could be figured out. You know, I also heard, you know, some other critique that came out of the community claiming that a future council could just repeal that provision. And I think the reality we face as a unit of local government is that any future council can repeal any work we did, you know? I mean, as far as policymaking. You can reverse policy. You can add new policy. So, you know, I think that the fact that that possibility exists makes it, is certainly not a reason for us to not try. You know, so, whether people liked or disliked the amendment that came out of our last session, that really was rooted in our desire to try to protect the private side owner, get the work done, allow them to get the work done, but then remove that financial responsibility from them, that burden from them. So, even though that amendment may need some kind of tweaking, it, does it seem, at least on its face, that, I mean, trying to make that acceptable to meet local needs, would that caveat existing in our draft still allow us to possess and earn points for a valid LSL replacement ordinance? I know it does take some of the teeth out.
Right. I do believe that the DNR will. I don't know that it would pass the PSC review.
Okay.
If we were going to go in for water rates. I couldn't guarantee you that the DNR would accept... I couldn't guarantee you that the DNR would accept it, but, you know, they don't seem to be as, as concerned as the PSC, right?
Right.
I think the one thing with the amendment is that everybody should understand is that, that ordinance with our replacement plan should be reviewed every year, right? So as we apply for funding and as we receive, like, we're expecting 100% principal forgiveness on the private side for 2025, right? And so if that ends up being the case, then it seems like that ordinance follows, you know, with what the council's intent was, that, you know, private owners, that, that amount will be covered. But in future years, you know, we may not get that level of principal forgiveness and then the council will have to make a decision. Are you going to continue on with the ordinance as written and, you know, have additional funding available through the city or other means? Or are you going to amend that ordinance, you know, at, at that time? Because, you know, whatever the budget cycle looks like for that following, you know, that year that we're going to be doing that work in.
The possibility always exists, though. I think that's...
It will, it absolutely will, yeah.
Yeah. Sarah?
Is there an ability for ordinances to sunset? Like, would we be able to put a date on it, like, at the end of this term, just to reevaluate, see how it works and then reevaluate it?
I, I, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So we could sunset it, try it for a certain amount of time. That would take out the worry of anybody sort of undoing or fun having.
Right.
And then we could sort of see how it goes for a couple of years.
Well, I mean, it really would, as, it really would only help us in the scoring matrix, though, for the period during which it exists. So if you're applying for 2026, you know, and we repeal that in 2025 or we sunset it in 2025, it's not going to be there to earn the points that we need it to be earning. So we'd have to be careful with what we set as a sunset date. I mean, you could certainly tee something up for annual review. We've done that before with things, like, you know, this ordinance will be reviewed November 1st of every year with a, you know, and you would be then making a series of subsequent voting decisions to either keep it, change it, or get rid of it. I mean, that does open up a lot of uncertainty, because, I mean, then you are, you know, creating that potential. But I think legally, that's possible. We've done that with other things.
And then I guess that, like, would it diminish our scoring, like, if they saw a sunset or if we did an annual review?
Yeah, I don't know how the sunset, I would prefer that if you just set a review period, right, for the ordinance, that this council, you know, takes a look at that. And what, and from my standpoint, based on the funding allocations, that would be for the following year, you know? Because there could be budget impacts on how that ordinance is written for the following year.
So we could just have it reevaluated annually to update based on the conditions?
That would be part of the policy that we set, I think, is the frequency of the evaluation.
So that could add into it.
Could. Carol and then Alder Killian.
Thank you. I thought that that was something that we had said any, when we had first decided to work with CIP, that that, there was going to be an annual review.
Absolutely.
So it seems to me that maybe the timing would be kind of similar, and so I guess that's, that's what I was wondering. I mean, because I heard some of those critiques too, and I mean, any, a body can change anything at any time, so that would allow us that flexibility. I guess that's what I'd like, that it...
To time it, so it's all under review at the same time, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, or if, if that works that way, but yeah, the annual review, because I think, I think it was, like, maybe at the, I don't, I don't know when it was that we were going to do it, it seemed to me like maybe in the summer or something, but it sounds like it would maybe line up around the same time. But I guess my point is just that I like the idea of if we do decide down the road to pass an ordinance, but that it could be reviewed every year anyway with the, because of the funding and, and if the funding changes, if, if they add in other requirements or whatever, we could amend it.
That was part of our discussion, is if the fund mix is not to our liking, that we would have to slow ourselves down until it was. So Alder Killian and then Alder Hanky. Go ahead, Terry.
Is this a time to, oh, excuse me, is this a time to discuss our constituent concerns about the ordinance or is this just to discuss?
I think, I think so, because, you know, we receive, we're going to receive public comment also. I would say that what we'll do is take the public comment and then item number three is a discussion amongst us about some of this. So, you know, I think on the heels of the public commenters that have come tonight, you could certainly offer what you've been hearing in your neighborhood. I think that's relevant.
Okay, but I have one, how about our concerns about the ordinance, the way it's written? Is this a time that we can express those or is that...
Well, I think, let's clarify, because right now, we're trying to clarify the questions about the presentation.
Okay.
So I think I would do that with item three also.
All right, thank you.
So that'll give us a little more time to fully dive into that. Alder Hanky.
So I'll move one of my comments to them, but when, I just want to clarify, when you say full replacement, we're not talking about going into people's houses and going to their kitchen sinks. We're talking full replacement to the water meter in the basement, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So none of this is ever going to be, none of this ordinance covers someone having to get rid of lead lines?
Right, like, I guess that would typically be called on-premise plumbing, right? So anything after the meter, it would not include.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify for everyone else.
Yeah.
And then it's, the interest rate is 0.25%?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds like a no-brainer there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alder Kusselman.
So as part of the, as part of what was addressed, I think that we, with the city council and the city, we're getting some kind of a report with regard to 20, this year's program. I think that was promised early on.
Absolutely.
So we'll be getting, also with federal funding, the EPA is sort of, I think their funding sometimes can be wishy-washy with regard to the politics of this country. Do we anticipate consistent funding through all this? Because I think this is a topic that we would be concerned about as we go forward in our, is that something you want to address or is that just a, maybe it could be a hypothetical question and, and you can, and not answer that, that's fine. But I, I, I'm concerned, with regard to the ordinance itself, I think that what we are, what are we promising the citizens tonight, or at least as we talk about this, we're really, with this ordinance mandatory replacement, we're promising them that we have, the city of Wausau will have a future of replacing lead pipes throughout the city because we're passing this mandatory, you know, it sort of becomes an unofficial law, well, it becomes a law, it is not unofficial. But, you know, and I'm concerned that as we go through this, we may not be able to either financially or mostly financially, just be able to, you know, carry on with that because depending on Wisconsin and our federal funding, where will we be? And, and in a few years, the citizens are, well, we're depending, maybe they're saving money or whatever. I'm just concerned, I personally am concerned that this is putting us into some kind of a bind that we may not know how this is going to turn out within the next few years.
You want to talk about the, the funding?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just, just wanted to respond to the comment about the funding. So the current bill funding that came through, the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law, which is what is allocated to DNR that then allocates it to municipalities, that is, we know that it's available through 2026 and that's, that's all we know. So whether or not additional bipartisan infrastructure law funding will become available for future years, we'd like to hope so, but we don't know. The landscape is unknown at this time.
Is there any Wisconsin, what about the state of Wisconsin? Is that, are there...
So DNR will still continue to offer loans through their base allocation funding that they get every year, but it is not to the same terms as the private lead service line funding that they get right now through the bipartisan infrastructure law.
Because we, I'm fearful that we're either binding the citizens and the water pay, and as part of this is the, the ratepayers themselves. I think that, you know, I think it was used that it's possible that ratefa, basically the water utility itself may have, is that possible or is it just going to be pretty much city, the city of Wausau and/or the state of Wisconsin or the federal? What, is there a role potentially of the, of the water utility itself, being a part of the funding?
Yeah, so the water utility right now, we can use water rates to pay for the public side replacement of service lines, right? And that's what we do now.
Right.
But we cannot use it to replace the private side unless we get PSC permission. And if we get PSC permission with the help of an ordinance, then ratepayers can only pay up to 50% of the private side. The other 50% has to be carried somewhere else. And so I think that, you know, basically how the ordinance is written right now is that if you're going to enforce private side lead service line replacement, then the city's committing to funding that private side in some way, shape, or form, whether that's through federal principal forgiveness or other means. So that's the way it will be until you amend that ordinance, yeah, moving forward. And that's why I think that they're asking to have it reviewed every year, depending on the available funding on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Well, and last time, when we considered the ordinance at council, it seemed like the PSC process was kind of a non-starter. I mean, at least among us that we're discussing it, partially because it affects the financial health of the utility.
Correct, yeah.
You know, that, and it's possible that our amendment that protects the property owner from the costs may be non-compliant and, and may not cause that ordinance to be effective enough to score with PSC even. So, you know, absent us using that PSC process, we may position, if we're, if we decide to move forward, we may be putting ourselves in a more advantageous position to not leverage that PSC process, just because of the heightened level of activity in the utility. And when we use user rates to pay for things out of the utility, the financial health of the utility is, is a problem.
Right.
Or could become one. So there's that. Any additional questions on what we saw in the PowerPoint? Let's go, Vicki and then Terry.
Mine actually was more of what I was hearing from my constituents.
Okay.
And I, I, what I'm hearing from my constituents is that, number one, they feel they were kind of misled through this whole process. They never really expected there to be a cost to them. They, they felt that this was going to be 100% taken care of. And, and I can understand that, looking back at some of the previous information that was given to them or not given to them. And I've also had constituents say, even if you would force me to do this, there's, many of them have said, I have no plans to change my interior plumbing, you know, another bill, I've got copper lines, I've raised my family in this house for, I've been here for 60 years and my children are fine. I know that there is lead lines going to my house, that it's a lead main. And you know that along with this, we have to look at the financial health of our constituents. And to force people into something that they don't want to do with their own home, their own property, I think we have to take a really serious look at that. Thank you.
Okay. And we can hold some more of the detail on that also to item three. Anything else on the PowerPoint or on the presentation that Gemma made?
I'm not sure if this would relate... I'm not sure if this would relate to funding or not, but I know when we contracted with CIP, we asked them if they would communicate with our residents in all of their languages because these are critical issues that have to be conveyed, okay? CIP is doing a wonderful job of that, but our city has just put out an ordinance and held meetings that are only in English. So the people who are going to be affected by this ordinance are probably a lot of lower and middle and moderate income homes and they have no way of understanding what's been put out or even knowing that it's out there. So I do have a concern about that process. Just wanted to express that. I, I don't know if that is going to affect funding or does it affect funding?
No, it does not, but we do need to communicate with the public in general, right? And so, yes, through CIP and their public outreach, and we can certainly do a better job on our side to translate some of this information and provide it out from the city itself as well.
And that was brought to me.
Yeah.
And I know we've addressed these language issues multiple times with the city and it just doesn't seem to change. So when I look at what's in the ordinance and how it's going to affect families, it concerns me that these families aren't even going to know what's, what's being brought to them, so...
Well, I think one good thing we have is we do have some time. I mean, we're not under the gun to make this decision during the month of August or September. I mean, we expect that the rule changes that are going to really put us where the rubber meets the road are coming in the early part of next year, right? So, you know, we, we have control over when this comes back to council for a final decision. I think that means there would be time for maybe translation of the draft, maybe we could engage with neighborhood groups, which will probably, most, most neighborhood groups, there's some that don't meet during the summer, but they'll be taking up again in the fall for sure. You know, I think it gives us some different opportunities and additional opportunities for public engagement in neighborhoods before we make a decision. I mean, we have control of the council agenda, so if we decide that, you know, we want to give ourselves three months to talk about this in neighborhoods and in neighborhood groups and with minority communities, you know, we, we can afford to give ourselves that time to make sure that we get it right. You know, I mean, we, we would like, probably like to try to make a decision before the end of this year because your applications are going to need to keep going in, but, you know, we don't, certainly don't have to decide it in August or in September.
Right.
Right? So anything else on the presentation itself? Because if not, I'll bring up the public commenters in order, so we'll, we have four people who've registered tonight. The first one is John Radke.
Good evening. John Radke, 703 Franklin Street. I guess I've got more questions than when I first walked in here tonight. One thing Mr. Lemon did say that kind of caught my attention is he said for the '25, the money is pretty much guaranteed for, we were told that for '24. And now we found out, no, it really wasn't guaranteed, right? A portion of it was, the rest is still a loan. Is that right?
2024 is funded, correct? You know, I guess...
It is by, I thought there was still that the city had to come up with, what, 1 point however much million, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine, hey. So it's, yeah, there is a split for this year. I believe it's around 2.2 million for loan and 3.2 or so for principal forgiveness. Next year, there will be a loan and grants or a loan and principal forgiveness split. So the proposed right now is 9 million for principal forgiveness and that's all for the private side. And then there would be a $5 million loan portion that would be for the public side, the city side, yeah.
So yeah, those are definitely discussions that we'll have to have.
Okay, that's just what I, I kind of understood. And the other thing, I guess my question is, if, the way I understand it now, if I wanted to do my lead service line and I, say, I got five properties, 10 properties, I want to do them all because I can get in on this, this money, what happens with the city side? Isn't that, I mean, I don't know how they're going to be able to start doing all these different streets. Eau Claire Boulevard was perfect, they did everything. How do they start digging up five or 10 different streets that, say, I would want to do, just to do, because if I do mine, the way I understand it, the city would have to do theirs. Is that right?
Yes.
How, I mean...
That, I guess, is a valid question. Are we pulling lines in areas where we've not already redone the public? Because they started to prioritize them where they were going back into neighborhoods where they had already done the public piece and the homeowners were not able to do their half and then offering them the chance to get their half first, right? So that's kind of where CIP started. And, you know, I've had constituents ask about it that wanted theirs done and, you know, that particular zone of the city isn't part of this year's project. Like, they're kind of waitlisted, basically, because... Like, they're kind of waitlisted, basically, because my geographic territory, where those couple of houses are that wanted to be looked at, yes, they have the lead pipes, but they're not up yet in the cycle. So is, would there be a wait, do you think, depending on where those homes are?
Yeah, it's really going to depend on where the homes are, right? So we're, we're selecting census tracts. That's how the funding is allocated. So we've chosen certain parts of the city that, in census tracts, to maximize the funding that we're going to get, and where the majority of the lead is. So if you're inside one of those tracts, then likely, you know, we, you'd be on the inventory list for that year. If not, then we would take that inventory, but it would potentially be for a future year.
So they could be kind of waiting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a great question.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, public commenter number two, Larry Stuckey. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Council Committee as a whole. I live at 616 O'Clough Boulevard, and yes, we had our lead service line replaced and very happy about it. Notwithstanding all the information that I've heard tonight about sources of funding and the like, let me provide some historical background here. Humankind is known for about 2,000 years that, that lead is toxic. Many scholarly historians ascribe lead in Roman food products, including wine, as being one of the reasons that the Roman Empire fell. There is evidence that folks in Northern Europe who were mining lead products few or 400 years ago suffered from what was called plumbism, lead poisoning. In 1991, we had the original lead and copper rule, and at that time, signs went up on a lot of public building drinking fountains, saying, let the water run for a little while before you take a sip. Now, lead has been around for a long time, and it's very useful in certain ways. Why do people use lead? It's easily formed into tubes and pipes. It's cheap, and rodents don't like to eat it. Some of the original telegraph lines laid underground a couple of hundred years ago were laid inside lead pipes. That's a far cry from delivering city water, drinking water, in lead pipes, which is what we did up until 1960s, 70s, around here, I understand. It's, there's a big difference. In short, I've spent my whole career, my first career, in environmental science and chemistry and engineering. My second career, I spent teaching young folks about environmental science and chemistry. The time has come. We've been at this for a couple of thousand years. I'm very happy that we're where we're at right now, and I am not naive about sources of funding, but you've got to find the money. But now is the time. We've, we've heard some technical information presented to the council in the previous session, and it's all there. The lead is, is toxic. It is not good for you, and we need to find a way to get those lead service lines replaced. Priorities need to put that lead service line replacement up near the top. The city is presented with many, many, many different ways of spending its money. This should be one of the top priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Next up is Mary Holkey.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Mary Holkey, I live at 1010 Sherman Street in Wausau, Wisconsin, west side of town. I apologize, I just had a coughing fit back there. I just have a kind of a random selection of things I'd like to say tonight, some of which were formed by my information level about this project prior to tonight, and then some additional information that I received tonight at the meeting, and I appreciate the, the volume of information that was presented. I have concerns about a mandate. I don't like the idea of someone coming to me and saying, you have to fix your lead lines, if you even have them. I don't know if I do or not, but I do live in a very old home, and I'm going to guess it's probably got lead lines. I, you know, I've lived there for a long time, raised two kids there, and no one's had any problems. One thing I would like to see with this project is a slower progression that allows for a real accurate funding mechanism and doesn't try to ram through the project in a really speedy basis. It's my understanding that we've got, like, 8,000 lines in Wausau that need to be done at a cost of $80 million, at least the numbers that I had seen. And I would like to see a slower process, more deliberative done, to get these done, if they're going to be done. I understand, too, that that money is not fully funded, and there's a progression that has to be done over time, across different years, and through various funding mechanisms. So I do have a better understanding, thanks to what Eric said tonight about the partial versus complete replacement, because one of my also, one of my concerns also is earlier information I had read about this project concerned me with the amount, I apologize, the amount of lead that starts to get jiggled loose, if you want to call it that, in pipes. When you start munking around and, and replacing pipes, then you've got lead flowing. And the recommendations I had heard earlier were that you run water for six months, extra water, make sure you're not drinking lead. I don't know if that's the right timeframe, but I, I was told that. And given our recent significant increase in water rates in this town and the additional amount of money that we do have to pay, that's a concern for me. Another thing that I would like to throw out there, I don't know if this has been considered or, or not, but I have one particular individual who's a friend of mine who is a city of Wausau resident, and he does home hemodialysis. So if we're doing this kind of replacement, I don't know if anybody has considered any possible impacts to that particular type of situation. My guess is there might be some other residents who are doing home peritoneal dialysis as well. This is a treatment for kidney failure, for those of you who may or may not know. So again, something to throw out on the table for further consideration and to be looked at. But, you know, from my perspective, my own personal preference for my property is not to do a replacement, but I do have a better understanding, really, Eric, tonight about the idea of doing the whole thing now in terms of what the benefits are overall in the project. So thank you for your time and appreciate you taking my comments.
You bet. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Last commenter is Tom Killian.
Good evening, Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street. I had not intended to comment tonight, but since we had multiple federal agencies present, it seemed like an opportune time to maybe address some relevant issues. And so I would note that we've had EPA presence tonight, we've had a HUD presence tonight, and I would invite both agencies to pull up their own materials and guidelines on public participation, and then ask themselves, on this ordinance that's threatening to fine citizens $1,000 per day or turning off their water, have those federal agencies ensure those guidelines even occurred, even a percentage of them during this process. They have not. They should know that the Hmong language meets the safe harbor threshold in Wausau. That's in Metro Ride's Title VI analysis. Where the heck is it? So we used, as an alder brought up, yes, when contracting with CIP, it was important to the city that they could communicate in English, Hmong, and Spanish. Yes, I think they've tried hard to do that, but the city has not. There's been no ordinance-related information other than in English, not in Hmong or Spanish. There's not even been summaries of meeting materials. So let's not use the veneer of environmental justice on this when no one, not even the federal agencies or the state agencies seem to give a damn about that. And while they're on the line, let's ask, you know, HUD flew up here to push something that was very politically important. We've talked about for years, the city has no language access plan. That's been brought up, did they fly up then? Does the EPA care about childhood exposure to dioxin or thallium in our working-class neighborhoods? They didn't fly up then. They only fly up, apparently, when it's a political scheme or a funding scheme. And this isn't Kantian ethics, so I really don't care what the motivation is, if there's a good outcome for our people, but we should care about motivation when it affects the outcome. And I think if we are to legitimately look at serving and protecting our people and environmental justice, we must make sure that we are not throwing blanket risks and threats at regular citizens, especially vulnerable segments. The alder was correct. If it's a slumlord who will not protect its own residents, who will not comply, they should be fined. $1,000 per day? How about 2,000? If it's that type of thing, putting people at risk, but not regular residents who can't even afford to, to replace these lines on their own. So that needs qualification, okay? Right now, it's completely inappropriate, and it puts people at risk. And, and, you know, when I bring up the, the political or funding scheme nature of this, one thing I worry about, okay, when I was an alder, I brought up, you know, there was concerns about the particular program at the time. And what this essentially does is creates a guaranteed customer base for that program, all right? So I think we want to make sure, how coercive is this going to get to create that customer base? Maybe none of you would do that, maybe no one at the utility would do that now. How about next cycle? So we, we must be careful that this is not so coercive to create a customer base that it puts people at risk. And finally, there should be consistency with the vigor and zeal that you mitigate exposure to contaminants, especially for children, right? So the optics of this are, if it comes down from Washington or Madison, and it's really important to really important people, then we're going to do it. Heck, fly them in from Washington if you have to. Well, to make this legitimate, you must approach mitigation of contaminant exposure with consistent zeal. That means on the southwest side of Wausau, other low-income parts of Wausau, other limited English proficiency parts of Wausau. And I hope you do, and I hope the feds don't just get on a plane for a public relations response, but it's a public policy response moving forward, and they actually start giving a damn. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Tom was the last commenter on public comments, so we'll close public comment at this point. That brings us to agenda item number three. We're not going to act on this tonight, or, or take action or make a motion on it, but this is the time where if you want to talk about what you've been hearing in your neighborhoods, maybe your reaction to the draft, I mean, we can have some basic discussion on that. I mean, like I said, we've got some time on this whole thing, so, and knowing that the rest of the council meeting is waiting on our heels, we don't want to do this for too, too much longer, but we'll take comments from a couple of you. Larson, and then Sarah Watson.
Thank you, ma'am. Sure.
And then Chad.
I guess Eric had brought up, you know, about there being a 50-50 split, you know, from, from the city. Is that, can you explain what a 50-50 split is? I mean, I'm just saying, okay, say like it's, I have in my house 30 feet, and what is the cost, what is the approximate cost, you know, for, for lead replacement line for my 30 feet? And, and then what would be the 50%? Of course, 50% of that. So can you, is there any cost estimate there? What is what I'm?
Right. So what I was talking about, the 50-50 split, is if we were going to use utility rates, utility water rates, right? The PSC, if approved, would only allow you to use 50% of the cost of the project on the private side, and the other 50% would be the homeowner. So is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, yes, that's what I'm talking about. So I'm just looking for a cost estimate. What, what would be the cost for, say, like, my portion would be 30 feet?
Right. So we had a bid cost of $4,800 each for service lines, right? And so obviously 50% would be $2,400.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, and then Chad.
I think a lot of what's sort of freaking people out is just the uncertainty. And so I think it was mentioned, the, the infrastructure bill funding will run to 2026, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so is there a way that, like, the utility or staff can, like, work on, like, what would happen in the two years if we did this program and had the mandatory line replacement? Like, what would be the tracts, like, the specific locations in the city? So it sort of gives people a little prep time?
Yeah.
And like to know, oh, I'm on the list for, like, 10 years down the road, or it's not going to be that long, but like, you know.
Right.
So, and since we know we have the money through that, we would still have the principal loan forgiveness with the 0.25% interest rate, right? But then is it also possible to, to like, sort of see a projection of, this is what's going to happen if we would continue with the federal funding? This is what would potentially happen if that federal funding dried up? Like, is that too complex to, like, project out? Like, say, okay, we, we're going to do this neighborhood, this is planned for 2025, this is planned for 2026.
Would it be possible to map it? I mean, could we GIS this and, like, figure out kind of what zones are when?
Yeah, so, so if you look on, and, and we just really started this, and we're proposing a, a larger press release and, and outreach here in August, early September, starting for the 2025 season as we move into the inventories. But, but, yeah, I mean, we have maps with regards to the census tracts that we're working in, which ones were proposed to work in for '25. We can definitely do one for where we would propose in '26. And then we could also try to do our best to estimate what those costs are. I, I would, I would also just like to say that, you know, I know the public with the unknowns that are coming forward, staff has the same anxiety, you know? We're coming before you to ask you to commit to things, and we don't even know what kind of funding we have, right? But that's the, that's because we're working with the state, and that's how their, their system works, right? So it, so definitely I can relate to how the homeowners are seeing this, right? And I, I, but I, I think that's a very good point, as we move forward with the broader public outreach, to try to do a better job on our websites, you know, to try to explain and visually see, like, am I going to be in that area? Am I not? When am I going to be? Yeah, yeah.
Because I think, I mean, if it, if I don't know, and it's coming up, like, next year?
Right.
You know, I don't have a lot of time to, if I, if I could save for it?
Right.
Or, you know, know that I'm going to get some of the principal forgiveness or?
Right.
So, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Holder, thank you.
Thank you. I had this, I'll start with Eric. So I think that would be a good thing to share during infrastructure and facilities. For everyone who doesn't know, I've talked with CIP. They're coming every month to give us progress reports on how many they've replaced. You can look back at the last meeting. I forget the exact number, what they replaced, but they're coming there. The map might be a good time. I mean, we can look at a first draft of that, for, you know, during that. And then I did hear a couple mentions about the $1,000 a day fine, and I, I shared the same concern, and I talked with Tegan about it. I don't know if you would like to come up. I read it the way I feel like a lot of other people are reading it. I've reread it, and I, I think I agree with you now, the way I rewrite, reread it, but if you would like to give a little information on that.
Sure. So just to, just to clarify, so with this new amendment, the only time that we would be able to enforce this would be if the replacement was 100% be able to enforce this would be if the replacement was 100% covered by grants on the customer side. So that's the only time that we would prosecute an individual or cite an individual for failure to replace their lead service line. So how municipal court works in a nutshell? So there are two ways that we can cite an individual into municipal court. The first way is through citation, and the second way is through a summons and complaint. So if you do a summons, or typically how our office works, and I'm going to cite a housing code violation, because this would probably fall under a plumbing code violation type of scenario. So how we do that is typically, we notice, hey, there's a violation. So the city department that's in charge will reach out to the homeowner. We always send letters in the mail. Sometimes we send one letter, sometimes we send multiple letters, saying, hey, you've got this violation, needs to be fixed, this is the code section that it's a violation of, please contact our office if you have any questions. So the people who contact our office, typically, they don't go to court. They get granted time to fix the violation, their side is heard out, said, hey, I didn't get it done because of X, Y, and Z, and, but I can get it done by now, by this specific time. They get it done, no issues, nothing further happens. Let's say they don't come, don't contact the city and don't do anything like that, then what will happen is typically that department will send out a citation. And the citation is for a single-day violation. So typically where this says it's between, so it's no less than 50 and no more than 1,000, our housing code violations are all 124 a day. So with a citation going based off of that, you just do one number. So here it would be $124, they're cited that, then they, they have an opportunity to come into court, you have an initial appearance in front of the judge, it's Judge Sauer, and at that time they can say, hey, I don't agree with this, I want to take it one step further. In that case, then we would go to a pretrial conference where that would be in front of me currently. And so they'll talk about it, say, hey, I don't agree with this, I don't like this, blah, blah, blah. We discuss it, either they plead to it, and then they've gotten, they get 60 days to pay it, or they get, they get to be put onto a payment plan. Or we set it for a trial, and at that time, the judge will make a decision whether or not they were in violation of the municipal code. And in this case, to be in violation of the municipal code, we would have to have grant funded, fully funded on the customer side, and the customer refused to allow the replacement that was fully funded by the grant. And in that case, then the city could, could charge them, and it would be the citation. So it'd be just a one-day violation, $124, and that's it. The other option that we can, that we can charge is called a summons and complaint. And typically, we don't do those right off the bat. We, we take a lot of time before we do that, because we understand that that's a lot of money for a housing code violation or any kind of violation. So how that works is you'll, the homeowner will have received numerous letters, no response will have happened. And then the city, the department will send a referral to the city attorney's office, will review that referral, and as far as summons and complaint, they have a start date for when the violation occurred, and then there's no end date, because at the time of the summons and complaint to be, that's filed, there, the problem is still an issue. So there's still a violation that's occurring. So that gets filed, the judge signs it, we have court. The homeowner is brought into court, they come to court, we have a discussion with the judge, myself, and whatever inspector is in charge of it, and the judge will call the case, he'll leave the room, and then the property inspector, myself, and the homeowner will have a discussion, and they'll talk about, hey, here's the issue, what's going on? And then they're given a certain timeline in which to comply. And we set like a trial stop date for that. And then if they're not complied by that date, and we have a trial, then we go forward with the trial. But, and then they, and then at that time, if they're found guilty, then yes, the city can request that they be charged for every $124, or the 50, and no more than 1,000, for every single day that they've been in violation. And yes, that does add up. But here's the caveat. The judgment, yes, it does get entered, and then typically, our office takes about 60 days before we enter that with the circuit court. However, that judgment can be reopened if there's a stipulation between the property owner and the city attorney. And I just signed one today. So it does, it does happen quite frequently. So what will happen is, let's say, the homeowner does end up saying, okay, we've had this trial, I've been found guilty, you have the grant money, you can pay for it, go ahead and fix it. So then what will happen is the inspector or whatever individual is working on the property, they'll send a memo to my office and say, hey, Teigen, so-and-so at this location, fix the property, what do you want to do? So what I'll do is if I have a phone number, I'll call the homeowner and say, hey, you fixed the property. How about we reduce this judgment? Would you stipulate to reducing it to a single-day violation instead of that huge judgment? Most often, they say yes. If we don't have a phone number, we send a letter with the stipulation drafted already for moving it to the single-day violation, if it's just been for like a year or so that they have, that they've been in violation. Then we send that in the mail to the, to the most recent address. Typically, someone will respond to us and say, hey, we want to, we want to, yes, we want to pay $124 instead of the $50,000 judgment that we have on the home. Does that answer your question? I was kind of long-winded, I am a lawyer.
No, I think that just helps clarify our prior practices and what that wording means exactly, so...
Yeah, so just because we can do it doesn't mean that we do, and it's not our practice to do it, it's just worded this way because this gives us the leeway to have that enforcement power for doing a summons and complaint.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other brief comments, just to kind of bring this to some closure so we can resume council? Gary.
Well, yes, thank you. And I was quite impressed, I think, I think the gentleman with regard to the urgency, I think that we, I think no matter, I think we have to take it upon, the city has to find out a way to do this, promising the people, I think the health, the health issues, you know, I think all that we heard tonight is that we have to, we have to do this, and how we do it, maybe federal funding, maybe we have to rearrange our own priorities within the city, maybe other public works, things gets rearranged, maybe not depending on federal or Wisconsin funding. But I think that after tonight, I think we have learned that this is indeed an issue that the City of Wausau has to deal with, and that we should go ahead. And after reading or listening to the, with regard to, I think that's a lot to put any citizen of the City of Wausau through, if he decide, or if this person would decide to, to not do this in his house. I, I don't see myself voting for this ordinance right now. I think some parts of it scare me, but I think, but on the other side, I think that it's incumbent on the City of Wausau to lay out a plan with funding, maybe some funding, but that the citizens of the City of Wausau, in all the languages, can see what we're doing, and that we're trying to fix a problem that we have had for a long time, and that needs to get fixed. I don't think this ordinance is it. I think that we have the, the power and the, and the smarts to come up with some other ways of doing it. So I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Carol? Go ahead, and then we'll just, and we'll take Terry's last comment, and then we'll try to get back to council here so we can finish this council meeting that we've recessed.
Thanks. I'll make this quick. Eric, if, do you have any idea when we might hear about, like, if we've been awarded funding for 2025?
Yeah. DNR recently had said they expected mid-September their list, so it's coming soon.
And then we'll know how much? Like, if we're awarded it, then would then it be possible to get an idea of how many, like, what the census tracts and all of that, like, this fall or something, maybe, or...
Yeah, I, I'll work with CIP, because we've already started on some of that public outreach and some of that documentation, so I'll see if we can't get something to the next infrastructure.
Oh, okay.
And if, if we do have something together, I'd be happy to share it with the council too, you know?
Okay.
I think that's important. Infrastructure meets the second Thursday of every month, right? So, I mean, that's coming up in September, but, I mean, if that could be shared out just to everyone, in case they're not following the packets, that's helpful.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, my hope is that we could get as much done as we can before 2026 or up until then, and then see what happens.
Okay. Terry?
And this is for Eric. I just want to, before, before the meeting started this evening, I had a couple of phone calls, and they were from people who said they wanted very clear, is the, they understand that the mandated ordinance would be to have increased points from the DNR, correct? That would be the reason?
That, yeah, that's one reason.
Okay.
Yeah.
But from what I've been reading, is it true that the City of Wausau is in a very good position as far as funding, because they've been so assertive in their applications and so forth, that they're in a fairly good position compared to other cities as far as funding?
Yeah, we have been. I think as, as you've heard, it's, as, as we move forward, it's just going to be more competitive, right? Because other communities are going to be coming into this. So, but yeah, as of right now, we've done, we've done quite well.
And we are still okay to get state funding without the mandate?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think that good information and good comments from everyone tonight. Thank you also to our commenters for hanging in there, because the hour grows late, but, and we do have a number of items we have to work our way through on the agenda. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Motion from Watson, second from Tierney. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? No one's ever opposed? All right, so we'll stand adjourned. If we want to just take a couple minutes here so we can reset for the public access video and that for the live stream, then we can revert back to council. Thank you, everyone.